Our social workers, elementary psychologists, split between buildings. So every day, you know, they're traveling, you know, to different, different locations. So that's part of that.
Hmm. Are there any other, are there professional development travel costs in that number? That I'm looking at, that would, would, that would be in that number of the, it was, you know, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifteen going up to twenty-eight thousand, one hundred?
And I think, but, I'm sorry, there's, there was a, and I'll have to go back and look at my backup, but there was staff travel for, I believe, our special services department that was being charged within another line, but we've consolidated that all, it should all be in staff travel versus being in another line item. And I'll double check that, and if I can't find exactly where that is, I will email when I email.
Okay.
But I'm fairly certain that that's what it was, and was trying to remember from where I'm going.
And the travel-
And it's mile, it's just, it's mileage reimbursement.
Yeah, right. The mileage reimbursement, and that's pursuant to your, to the labor contracts presumably.
Right, and the IRS mileage rate.
Yes, and the IRS rate.
The IRS did go up slightly.
Yes, it went up slightly, so that accounts for something. Okay. Another, I guess, oh, and yes, on the, another question, page four of that same tab, the yellow tab, water and sewer cost, and I see a large jump, and I, obviously electricity, you know, maybe beyond your control, but what's, what's going on with the water?
Mm. Go ahead.
So, there was some issues in the previous year with how the water was being tracked, the meters were not functioning properly. So not all of the water was being, our water usage wasn't being tallied correctly, if you will.
Oh, goodness, okay.
So, in, last year, in sixteen seventeen, that was adjusted, we, they, working with Joe Brigaud, the public works director.
Okay.
We caught everything up, fixed everything, so now, this is, so, the budget was already done for seventeen eighteen, when all of this was discovered. So, this is based on, we got our first reading.
Real usage, okay.
So, it's the real usage.
Okay. My, my last question is more general, which is, throughout the budget, throughout your, your line items here, I can't always tell where, I see that you have a safety personality of staff, and those line items are apparent, but I can't always tell where you are with safety, technical, you know, pro, providing technical support for this, for that safety staff, or for the school in general, for, on a safety basis. So, where might those line items be? I mean, you don't have to answer this minute, but that, you know, I, I guess we, I think last meeting where Jeff presented, Camille had mentioned some issues about safety, and, and we know that this is front and center, and we see that you've increased staff, but have you, at the same time, taken other measures physically within these buildings, let's say? Or, or is that on the, is that, you know, future, in the future? And if so, again, would those be hopefully state or federal dollars that might help that?
You were talking about the cameras, et cetera, right? But the, at the elementary level, we haven't even touched it because of school projects, there's a line item to cover the cost of a lot of-
Okay.
-those items there. In the past too, the school security grant that's come forward from the state, I believe that continues, and we continue to take advantage of, of that as well.
Okay.
We haven't specifically put anything in, really, our focus is letting the pro, school projects first equip the, better equip the elementarys with those items.
Okay. That money that came from the state, do you know if that had a federal origin? I mean, was that, was that really state funding?
You know, I, I don't know, it might have. I thought it was a, a state.
I thought it was state.
But it may have been a pass-through to the federal item.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks, that's it for now, from me.
Just, talking about the school safety issue again, is there, is there a committee in place to discuss potential enhancements to school safety, other than additional personnel? Is there, who, who's addressing it? Is, is there a, a committee that's put into place, maybe of parents and teachers and administrators?
No, there's, there's a district-wide, yeah, a district-wide safety committee that meets regularly and discusses all sorts of items from, you know, accidents that might happen in the parking lot, as well as, you know, measures that we want to continue to put in place, the work of our campus security staff members, so, yes, there's a district-wide safety committee.
So, would I, would I be correct in saying that there aren't any additional capital items in your budget with regard to, say, metal detectors, maybe smoke alarms, if somebody were to, you know, trigger a switch, you know, that, you know, not tear gas, I don't know what it is that comes out of the, you know, that would kind of temporarily block the vision of somebody trying to do harm? What, is there anything in the, your capital budget at all that addresses some of these from a?
No, not, not to the degree of, you know, metal detectors, we haven't gone that far in discussions, it's been more about how we put our current level of staffing in place. I don't think, personally speaking, I, I don't think, you know, metal detectors, that's not where we're at right now. Who knows where we'll be in five years, three years, ten years, but-
And, and I'm not suggesting that I have the right answer, I have no idea whether, you know, it's arming a few select individuals, whether it's getting the metal detectors, whether it's getting the tear gas coming out of, you know, this, I don't know what the answer is, I guess I just am looking for some kind of assurance that it is being addressed, that there are people in place that are studying all the different alternatives. And, and while I definitely support, you know, mental health supports, and I do think that the school is one of the first places that you would see that, I, I, I don't think that's the only answer, and I don't think, it, it's sort of like how, what's the proper staffing level for a police department? I mean, no matter how many police officers you have, you're not going to avoid certain circumstances, you just can't, unless you have a one-to-one ratio, right?
Yeah.
So, what else is being done going forward, that would be my concern?
Well, I think that, that's where, it goes back to that core of addressing, you know, student mental health, and not allowing a student to travel through the years of his or her schooling, I don't want to stereotype, but you know, the quiet kid in the, in the back of the room that never says anything but is struggling inside deeply, we're not able to address that. If we get to that core, and we have the, the staff in place first, then, in my mind, you might avoid the need for, you know, the metal detectors, per se, something along those lines, but I think it's, we want to address as part of our goals, you know, meeting the mental health needs of our, of our students first and foremost. That's been our focus for right now, but not to say that we're not, you know, going to continue to discuss ongoing security measures of the buildings, but right now, they're very safe, they're very safe buildings, we feel, we've got cameras, we've got staffing in place, we feel good about it.
Okay, thank you. Just a few general comments, I mean, as always, I think that the Board of Ed does a phenomenal job, very professional presentation of the budget, I'm very appreciative of the zero-based budget, you know, starting point, and as last year, I will adopt the same approaches this year, where I'm not delving into the details, I trust that you guys are looking at the numbers, doing the best that you can. I am looking more at a macro level, and I still see a, a very sad state of affairs for Connecticut. I am worried about reduced revenues, and I think that if we are really fiscally prudent, we cannot spend more than we're taking in. You had mentioned earlier, Jeff, that you noticed that the, the current grant list had gone up three and a half million according to the budget, but when you talk, that's the projected increase, but when you talk about that, that's really, that's talking about an increased mill rate for our taxpayers. So, even if we put in a zero percent budget increase for the Board of Ed, we're still looking at a, at a tax increase for our taxpayers because of the decline in the revenues. So, while I also think it's very encouraging that younger families are moving into town, you know, because of our school systems, it's always a great thing, and if, certainly if I was sitting on the Board of Education, I'd put on that hat, and I'd be fighting for our students, our teachers, you know, to, to get the best services that we could afford, but I'm not on the Board of Ed, I'm on the Board of Finance, and I have to consider the other component of our town, which are seniors on fixed incomes, you know, I'm looking at people around my age nearing retirement that are leaving. So, I know of three personal acquaintances in the past six months that have left the state, two for Florida, one for Tennessee. So again, my focus is what happens when they sell their house? You went from a, a two-member household paying twelve grand in taxes with no kids in the school system, they sell their house, now they're going to bring three kids into the school system. So you enter this cycle where you're putting more and more of a, of a cost structure into the school system with less money to support it. So it's, it's really cycling down, and we have to find that balance. So, again, I'm looking at the macro level, I'm trying to, I'm going to try to figure out an increase in the budget that I think is palatable to everybody in town, not just those folks that moved here for the school system.
And I know that's tough, Camille, you know, with, we, we never want to see people, you know, leave our town, but you know, the, the new families that do move in, and when you talk about the tax increase, the mill increase, we're also at a time, I think, in, you know, maybe at a time where maybe the mill increase needs to be a little bit higher than it's typically been in the past years, to support and find that balance. So I know, as a resident and as a father and kids in the school system, you know, outside of my job, I'd be willing to, to pay those, you know, more in taxes to help cover that.
Certainly, I understand, Jeff, I, I really do, but I'm thinking about those people that have no kids in the, in the system, that are paying an awful lot in taxes, and we don't want to lose those revenues. We don't want three kids filling up those homes and going, now you're talking about a seventeen thousand dollar a year cost per pupil times three, whereas before there was a zero cost added to the system. So, again, it's balance. And speaking of the cost per pupil, I think for the past three years, it's gone up over fifteen percent. So, while the budget itself, the Board of Ed budget, you know, has been kept to around two percent, if you look at the cost per pupil, it's gone up over fifteen percent for the past three years from what I could tell. So, something's out of whack, and it's not up for me to dig into these numbers and, and see where savings could be made. I trust that you guys will do it.
Well, that's, that's been our ongoing focus, you know, I think you've seen the trend of the budget, you know, requests coming forward, going down, they're not going, they're not going up. We've tried to make many efficiencies, and I think we've done that.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you. Did you include a cost per pupil this year?
No, we don't have a, we didn't have a specific slide, it sits around fifteen and a half thousand, still we're in the middle of the dirt.
I know, a couple of years ago, I did an analysis, it said, for me, for my two kids that went through thirteen years of, thirteen years of public school here, I have to stay in town for eighty-two years to pay back, so every time I hear somebody say, "I moved to town so that my three kids could go into the school system," I'm like, "Oh, no." Because people move in, they have kids, they educate them, they move back out. So to me, that's a, that's a hard sell, but that's, that's just my own, I mean, like I said, I, I did the math a couple of years ago, and it, the return on investment's not there. So bringing people into town just for the school system is, so, for, for you to say, "We need more kids in the school system," I don't know that I agree with that, but that's okay, it is what it is. Different conversation for a different thing. Behavioral analysis, back to the budget. What's the difference between a behavioral analysis and a social worker?
Mrs. Davis?
Yeah.
Let me just come up and talk about a behavior, an, uh-
Yeah.
B C B A.
So, the position is called a behavior analyst, or a board certified behavior analyst, B C B A is the term.
Could you give her name first?
Oh, I'm Kim Davis, the Director of Student Services.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And this is a person who works with our specialized special education programs to track and shape student behavior. So, they work, it's just one person who works across all five schools with multiple special education programs.
Okay, so that's for the, the more kids, the more the-
Yes, intensive student needs, yeah.
Okay. This budget, the reason, thank you. The reason why I was asking where you were proposing to put these, increase staff, if the, if the, one of the agenda items that we spent a lot of time talking about tonight, the social workers and psychologists, we heard earlier that the need usually presents itself at age fourteen, and you're putting one and a half of the one point two of the staff into the grade school, which is well before when the need normally presents itself. Is the expectation that it's going to be preventative, or?
Yeah, exactly. Allowing for, you know, again, it's, it's two to three hours right now, which is very low, we, we're just looking to ramp that up to have a little bit more preventative maintenance at that elementary level. We're spreading it out across the, you know, all five schools.
Okay. Just, didn't feel to me like that's where the current need is at right now. Felt like, to me, from what I've heard, and what I've read, and what I know from my own experience, the need tends to be a little bit later in life than grade school, more in the middle school and, and high school years. But again, that's, that's what you guys do. All right. Back to some of these other questions that I had, I think we've already talked a bit about the reallocation of the budget between different WBSs into different things, and it gets confusing to me, but I'm, I think we've talked through a lot of those, those questions, they do, the math doesn't work for me sometimes, but that's because I tend to be a little OCD, and I want to see two plus two equal four somewhere, and I see two plus the square root of sixteen divided by eighteen, see page three, and it's like, ah, and the answer's A. So within here, if I can just get off that soapbox, you talk about computer consultants at three hundred and twenty-seven point six thousand dollars a year. How many computer consultants do we get for three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars?
For which, which page, Jeff?
No, with this, most of this stuff is just some of the summary. Again, this year, I tried not to dive into some of the nauseating detail that I had in the past. I tried not to, I did a couple of times.
You can't help yourself, can you?
No, I can't. OCD is OCD. It's-
Is it on this page?
I should have, it's in this first section.
Computer consultants is what the title is?
Is it three twenty-seven?
Three, it's on page, it's under the first tab, I know, page, the first tab, page one, you're looking at one nineteen, correct, Bill?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yep, okay.
So I just, I mean, because I saw the twenty percent increase-
Yep.
-it's kind of brought my attention to the three twenty-seven, and it's like, three twenty-seven is, is-
Stiff.
That's a lot of people, I think.
So-
To me, it feels like-
Yep, so, so that's where Jeff had kind of spoken to, about it before, we currently, I think John had asked the question, so we currently have a contracted service for IT.
Yep.
It ends June thirtieth. The plan when we were putting this budget together was, we really wanted to bring everything in-house and not have external IT people with access to our systems and so on. So, when we put this budget together, it was with the intent that we would have our own in-house staff, so that fifty-two thousand is for some part-time help desk people, assuming we wouldn't have a contracted service. So we're still working with that, to see if we can have that materialize. If we can't, then we will have to go back to the, we'll continue our contracted services, and we'll have to just, there's no additional funds, so we did it so that the cost of the current contract that we have now is the same as what we would do, we would bring in a network engineer, there was an extra, under one of the other categories, there was another eighty-five thousand extra, that would be for a network engineer, and then we have four, I believe, part-time help desk people that we've added, and then a part-time, I'll find the title in a second.
So you're going to have one full-time and a bunch of part-time?
Exactly. Trying to avoid-
Again, just philosophically, I've learned over the years, and I'm old, I get it, is that you got your core competencies right, and there's things that you do, and you do really well, and then there's stuff that you don't do. It's just, doesn't make any sense for, and maybe in this situation, to me, it feels like, if you've got contract services that do a good job, to bring that service in and to get an extra fifty-two thousand dollars to bring that service in-house, says, maybe bringing that service in-house isn't really your core competency, it's not really what the school system does best. Understand, at the same time, we're telling you to look at everything, and then we're telling you not to, I get it, but it's just, to me, it's just, it feels like bringing it in-house at a fifty-two thousand dollar cost increase feels like something maybe-
It's not an increase, so, that fifty-two thousand then reduced, so we currently have money in seventeen eighteen in contracted services.
That you reduce by?
So that fifty-two thousand is in there, contracted services is then reduced, and we're moving it into the part-time help desk people, because currently we have contracted services that are providing help desk support.
So it's two plus two less than four?
It's the-
Are you telling me that this is overall a cost reduction, or is this a cost increase?
No, it's, it's, it's level, so-
It's level.
It is level, that's what we tried to do, we didn't want it to cost any additional funding, so we tried to make it as level as, we tried to make it even, there's, I think, we reduced all of the contracted services, we added part-time technicians, so we obviously wouldn't have to pay benefits and so on, and we kept it level funded with the understanding that if this didn't, we couldn't get it to work and couldn't get the people that we needed, we'd have to obviously contract for those services again at that same amount, we wouldn't be able to have it for more. So, it's not a cost increase, the only increase that would be here is for what we talked about tonight, which is the social worker and the part-time psychologist.
I also noticed that I didn't make my annual disclaimer that my daughter-in-law works within the Board of Ed pool of people, and we're talking about her wages when we're talking about all this, so, I just want, in, in full disclosure, to include that. Summary benefit statement says, this is second E R I P payment.
E R I, okay, E R I P, yep.
Line two eleven.
Yep.
There's no first E R I P payment. Why do we have a second payment but not a first payment?
So, the first payment, which was this year, is, was made up, so that's early retirement incentive program for our teachers. So, when that was offered, we didn't know exactly who was going to be taking it, so that difference was made up by, so, quite a few teachers took it, so, we brought teachers in, obviously, at the bottom, the lower step, so that difference in salaries made up for that first payment. We did make first payment, so there, it wasn't budgeted here, because at the time the budget was being developed, we didn't know what that would be.
Sixteen teachers took advantage of that early retirement.
We spent three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for an early retirement second payment, yes?
We will, we have not yet, it's budgeted.
Okay, that's a second early retirement payment.
Correct.
The first early retirement payment, was there a first?
There was, it, there was this year.
Okay. So-
What I'm saying-
And we have one more year.
One more year. So in the budget seventeen eighteen, it says zero.
Because what was adopted at the time, it was not known who would take the early retirement, that had, was not finalized.
So if I looked at actuals instead of budget, then I would see a line item?
Correct, and you'll, this will be brought forward to the Board of Ed to do a budget transfer, so we'll revise-
Because that's one of my further down the stream questions is, and it's the same for, it's the same for all the budgets, we look at budget versus budget, but actuals really makes everything money, right? Because our actuals at the end of the year are not what the budget is.
Right.
So, when we look at all these budgets that we're going to look over in the course in the next couple of weeks, that actual makes it, and, and we're going to talk about this a lot over the next couple of days and weeks, but all those transfer of funds that we do-
So-
Makes this that much, again, my OCD says, I want to see three numbers that add up together.
So if you look on-
Yes, I did see, it was all in the back.
It's, so, but there, you'll see the actual there that it was paid, and you see the zero budget, and you see that it was-
Okay, okay. I didn't, I, I saw the actuals were in the back, and I started finding myself bringing numbers front and back, and I'm like, no, no, okay. Contract services decreased by a significant amount, we already talked about that, decrease in reclassification, we talked about that, about a district tuition, I think we talked about that, reclassification again, OCD time. Electric bill, we talked in the, in the back section that talks about the breakdown for each district, the overall electric went up six percent, Flanders went up six percent, Lillybee went up five percent, Niantic went up eight percent, Middle School went up almost nine percent, and the high school went up four and a half percent. Do we all have the same electric rate, or we?
Well, it's, it's on usage, I based it on, so we currently, in the, in seventeen eighteen, we will go over, so I based it on what was actually expended in the previous year, and what I was going to project we would expend in the previous year. So, obviously, there's, depending on energy, I have no idea why the schools are different, but it's the same, it's the same rate.
I want to know why they're going up.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same rate, they're going, well-
Well, that's, well, the rates go, if, if you- Tell me the rates went up two percent this year.
No, the rates are consistent, the amount that was, that is in the budget for seventeen eighteen, we will overspend this year.
Not enough was budgeted.
There was not enough budgeted for seventeen eighteen.
But that seventeen eighteen was budgeted as a function of sixteen seventy?
I, I, I can't answer that question, I, I wasn't there, I don't know how it was budgeted.
Okay.
All I can tell you is, it's, it's not budgeted for enough money this year, we will go over in, in the electricity, if it continues along the same pattern it's going.
Nine, almost ten percent increase in electric bill in the middle school, to me, feels fairly significant, and it feels like, I mean, that's a lot of dollars, I don't remember what the dollar amount was, but if we've got some kind of electrical, it-
Would it be, do they leave lights on at night?
Well, keep in mind that the buildings are used, you know, all day, all afternoon, evening, Saturday and Sunday, seven days a week, those buildings are, you know, are occupied with, you know, with people.
You know, like after midnight, or after eleven o'clock.
We have sensors that they turn off, they turn off automatically, yeah, trying to replace, you know, with, with LED efficient bulbs, et cetera, as well.
Up sixty thousand dollars.
That's, that nine percent equals sixty thousand?
Well, if you look at the rule up here by abject code, electricity's up six point two percent overall, which is sixty thousand dollars.
So in sixteen, in sixteen seventeen, we spent a million nine thousand dollars in electricity, the budget for seventeen eighteen was only nine hundred and fifty-four thousand. And it's, we're in a locked rate right now through October, so, again, I can't, you know, so-
So we might have just locked money out of that budget last year, saying, "If we go over, we got to pay the bill," but we got to take it from some line item, and we don't want to take it from this one, so perhaps we took it from electricity, possibly.
Knowing that the middle school's in their school, it just, to me, it seemed like it stuck out, but be it what it is, it is what it is. I went through the same exercise with the equipment, seven thirty-one and seven thirty-two, I lumped both forms of equipment together, because to me, I mean, it's, it's, you know, split maybe in half. Overall, the increase was fifty-two, almost fifty-three percent for one ninety, a hundred and ninety thousand. Flanders went down, yeah, a hundred and ninety thousand, Flanders went down sixty-seven percent, Lillybee zero, I didn't get that one, Niantic went up eighty-eight percent, Middle School went down, is that another accounting thing? Seven thirty-one and six-
Which page, where are you looking at?
It's all of them, so I, I, I went from the beginning, and I looked at the front section, the orange tab, I guess it is, and seven thirty-one and seven thirty-two, which are on pages-
Yep, it totals-
Four.
Yep, one ninety, one twenty-two.
Right? And then when you get back into the individual schools, Lillybee went to zero. Niantic Center went way down, Middle School went way down, High School.
So Niantic Center has a decrease in the, in equipment, they only requested three hundred and sixty dollars worth of equipment this year.
So page six, page six is the second tab, seven thirty-one goes to zero, and there is no seven thirty-two.
Right, so, this year Lillybee did not request any instructional equipment. Right. So this year Lilly B did not request any instructional equipment. Do you, do you have us, do you want to know why they didn't request the equipment or I guess I'm not?
If you know why they didn't request any equipment, I don't understand. Is it because they're regoverning the school and they didn't need the equipment? Seems to me like if the district has got a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in equipment, Lilly B at least need something.
Bulk of it is at the high school.
Is this, is this how the money, is this?
High school, middle school.
Is how they choose to spend that, this, this block of money?
Yes.
Along with the other supplies and.
Yeah, do you know why you didn't?
I was, I was in the restroom, I was at the beginning of the question.
Why, why there wasn't request at the middle, at the elementary schools for equipment? Yeah, you have three sixty.
What kind of equipment?
Instructional, yeah.
Just efficiencies, I mean, trying to work with what, what you have.
Yeah, because we didn't feel the need that we needed anyway.
What are, what are you talking about when you say instructional equipment?
Is that more instructional?
Piece of equipment, um, all of the instructional. Calculators?
Yeah.
That would be in supplies.
Yeah, it's checking every closet and use that as example.
Well, just trying to understand it. I would think that is a supply.
Smart boards?
Right, the smart boards.
So, but, but by no stretch of imagination are we saying Lilly B is doing the wrong thing. We're saying Lilly B is doing the right thing.
Yeah.
It's just a question as to whether or not there's a reason why everybody else isn't following Lilly B's example.
Then they, they had a need for something specific. It was scrutinized, you know, by the principal, scrutinized by us and then brought forward into the, into the budget. Okay? Yeah, I mean, if it's needed, it's needed. If it's not needed, they didn't need it.
And it's, also I try to do is I try to find the inconsistencies or what I saw to be inconsistencies and that's kind of where I kind of poked at some things. But I told myself I wasn't going to get into every dollar and send, and then I started to a little bit, so I stopped. So with that said, that's the end of my questions, I think. I think the, yeah, we talked about all those. And I had one other note, yeah, the behavioral analysis again, okay.
Okay.
We talked about water and sewer, but when you pull on that a little bit, the numbers are very inconsistent between schools, among schools. Forgive me.
Yeah, because some had the issue with the meter and some did not.
Well, well, what is, Lilly B's down twenty-five percent. Niantic is exactly at zero. Just trying to understand, right? Middle School is at up thirty-six percent and high school's up a hundred and seventy-five percent.
So what I did with that is I took the, I'm sorry, I took the invoice that we received for all of the schools in, I think we got it in October. And so that num, and then I doubled it because we get billed twice a year. So it was based on that usage in October, October's bill, if you will, so.
Why is zero for one of the schools?
Because zero increase or zero, right, because that was not one of the schools where we had the issue with the meters. So that was probably just budgeted along accurately.
The reason I'm poking at that, that's a lot of dollars in that and it is a fairly large discrepancy from up a hundred and seventy-five percent to minus twenty-five percent. And it seems if it were a meter, a metering issue, it would be a little bit more of a linear change between the years. You know what I'm saying?
Well, if there was a meter issue at.
At, it's not a meter issue at all the schools, so.
Yeah, in certain locations that they had issues. Yeah, meters were working correctly at some and.